I would like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, April 17th. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we please stand for a moment to remember Bert Jordan and Allison Hunter Johnston, the mother of Allison Riggie-Rousak. And Gabby, will you be doing the roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Olson?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here.
And not in attendance, Councilmember Sampson.
And City Manager, announcements or written communications?
We received two applications for the medical cannabis delivery business. The application fee schedule is scheduled for the May 1st City Council meeting. We are publishing it two Friday, consecutive Fridays in The Islander for any interested individuals in submitting a proposal for the Yellow Jacket B and WASP mitigation. Those proposals are due by Friday, April 20th at 4:00 PM. We did receive only one proposal for the Public Trash RFP, and that will be coming forward to you the second meeting in May, I believe, for your...
Excellent.
That'll be on May 1st?
No.
No, later.
Yes. And then the California Department of Motor Vehicles will be here on Monday, April 23rd through Wednesday, the 25th, so that's half day in the afternoon on Monday, all day Tuesday, and then just in the morning time on Wednesday.
And I'm sorry, the cannabis deadline has passed, the delivery service deadline?
Correct.
Okay.
The application part of it.
Yes, okay, thank you. Okay, Department Head reports. Who would like to start?
Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, reporting on what's happening with Public Works. Right now, we're repairing, we're doing repair work on South Beach. We've got the two sets of concrete steps. They had no sand remaining under them. They had about four inches of gap, so replacing some concrete on that. And additionally, while we're down there doing that, we're pouring some additional steps because that last step was about 18 inches.
Okay.
So we're doing both of those. We're working on the railing along Pebbley Beach Road there as you're walking right by the parks there, and we're doing concrete work there, and we'll also be replacing that railing there at South Beach in the very near future. And as we head toward the end of this month or at the start of May, when we get the sand back, we'll get 150 tons of sand ordered up, and we'll be replacing that sand there on all the beaches.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions if Bob Willie's here? No, okay. Chief Craig?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff. I'd just like to, very quickly, you may have noticed brush notice and weed abatement notices have gone out, so those will be, that's gone out in the local paper at various places around town and also on the city's current. And that's, those notices and the brush and weed abatement is due by June 1st.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And if they don't do it themselves, what happens?
If it's not completed or if there isn't a significant amount of progress that's been made, they can receive a citation. A lot of times, we encourage people, their hearts are in the right place, they start too early, and they do a great job of clearing the weeds and brush, and then we get a little bit of rain late season, and it comes right back. So we're willing to work with people, but they need to see progress by June 1st.
Great, okay, thank you. Harbor Master Point Dexter?
Tall guy, isn't he? Mayor, Council, hope all's well. As you guys are sure aware that we've had a couple of wind events this last couple of week and a half, two weeks, we had two gale warnings. We ended up losing two boats on the beach, one down by Frog Rock and one off Pebbley Beach. Of both these boats that, the one off Pebbley Beach, the owners knew about it, they're on, they've been contacted about moving, and they chose not to move, so they stayed on anchor and fortunately paid the price. The other one was a boat that's been on anchor out of city waters for years, and it ended up on the beach, and it's at, just past Frog Rock down by Rattlesnake Canyon. We didn't have any injuries. Again, the gale warnings that were in effect for northwest winds, which is far better than Santa Ana conditions, so we got lucky. I'm sure you saw the news with all kinds of issues on the mainland, so short of that, we're moving right along.
I have a couple of questions regarding those two boats.
Yes, ma'am.
The one that was over this way, has that been removed?
Yes, it's, last I saw it, it was up on the helipad deck, and they were getting ready to cut it up and remove it. That particular boat did have insurance on it for rec removal, and several years ago, the city went ahead and put that as a criteria to be able to be in city waters. Last time, we spent close to $30,000 cutting up a boat off of Scanso Beach because it didn't have insurance, so that paid off.
And the status of that other boat?
It's still on the beach. That's out of city waters, so it's not, it's not our responsibility. It's up past the high mean high tide line because there was an extreme high tide when it went on the beach, so the owner's been out there to look at it, and I don't know what, he hasn't made contact with us of what his plans are or whatever, so...
Because as I understood, the last time that that happened, and that one was there, and everybody in the community went and picked up all of the debris after months of that guy not doing anything, it was the responsibility of LA County Sheriff's to notify them and have that taken care of, and I wondered if the sheriffs were involved with this at all.
Well, they were. We did notify them, and we also notified Coast Guard. Sheriff's went down, took pictures of it, and that, I don't know what the status is from there on. I mean, I don't think the Sheriff's Department has money to remove it, so it's probably going to end up just breaking up and being there. It's just unfortunately, if you try to tow it off the beach, it's going to sink. The whole side is almost ripped right off it, so...
I guess, and it's not at you, I'm not directing this at all to you, but I mean, I think that's a shame that that boat's going to sit there. We don't know if there's gas onboard, what's onboard?
No, we pretty much know there's no fuel and stuff on that, yeah. When there's fuel onboard, we, you know, we contact the Coast Guard Pollution Control, and we advise them, and they come over. But this other boat out of Pebbley had a little bit of fuel, but they were able to get it out of the water, up on land, and not have an issue with fuel in the water, so...
But the debris alone, I don't think is a good thing, so maybe Denise, you might be able to follow up with the sheriffs and see what they may be doing about that? Because it shouldn't be, our locals shouldn't have to be the ones going to the beaches and cleaning up our beaches of the debris.
No, you're 100% right, and that's what happens, is people get these boats and put them on anchor out there, and, you know, and then we, as a community, have to deal with them.
Right, okay, but thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Recreation?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. I'd like to invite you all, as well as the community out on Saturday, this Saturday, the 10th, for our inductee honorees to the Avalon Kids Park Dedication Wall. This year, we will be inducting Sean Branick for Arts, Earl Schrader for Football and His Philanthropy, and the Blair Family. It'll be 10 o'clock across the street, probably about a half hour, 45 minute ceremony, so love to have you come out for that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
I had told Dan that I would not be here. I prepared a little statement for him to read, but hope the rest of you can be out there, some of you.
Unfortunately, I won't be here.
Oh, okay. Are you going to be in town, Willie?
Unfortunately, I won't be here either.
I'm so sorry, none of us will be there, that's terrible. Oh, well, but you, in our hearts, yes.
We'll be there in spirit.
Hello, good evening all, Admin Assistant for Planning and Building. A rapid report on construction activities is as followed. Advance, seal frame is underway. Gas service connection is scheduled for this week. Underground electrical trenching for conduit insulation is ongoing. For the Atwater project located at 123 Sumner, demo on third and first floor have been complete. Second floor is 70% complete. And for the Stangary project, foundation construction continues for both south building. New pool deck retaining wall support is underway, and north building roof trimming continues. And for the trailhead, the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing has been complete on second, hasn't complete, and on the third and floor, I'm sorry, for second floor, it's 95% complete, and third floor, 60%. And I would like to add that the Planning Commission meeting has been canceled for tomorrow. The notice mailed to the surrounding properties and posted on both city website and outside the city hall were correct, but unfortunately, the notice published in The Islander had a wrong date. We published a correct date in the following week, however, because of the second publishing notice that was corrected, it was not, the notice was not full and deemed insufficient. All four applications will be heard on the May agenda meeting.
Thank you very much, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Bob Torres, the Intern Finance Director, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council. I don't have lots to report. Last week, I reviewed a investment transaction with the City Treasurer Linds and acted upon it. We had two CDs that were maturing, and we're rolling those over and transferring the money over to our life account with the state pull, working on the proposed budget and making sure the bills get paid. That's about it.
How's the audit part going?
Pardon?
How's the audit part going?
Well, the audit, well, we're a little behind in the audit, but I spoke with the audit firm, and they've agreed to give me about 30 days to catch up on things, and they have some questions, but they're pretty routine type of questions that we can handle in finance.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Bob literally had three piles about this deep, and he's just down to one like that.
Yeah, I'm down to one.
I know, thank you, Bob.
That's great.
Okay, Councilmember reports.
I'm pretty quick, if you'd like me to go first?
Please.
I attended Gateway City's Council of Government on April 4th. Great update on cap and trade, which I transferred over to the city staff. The housing law update as well transferred over, and I'm very pleased to report that the Gateway Cog will be holding a retreat here in Avalon on June 15th and 16th. Lots of great items being tossed around for discussion, one of them, public-private partnership, which I'm really excited about. Another topic will be on housing, so that's going to be open to city staff and any of our elected officials here. For sure, we'd like to try to get as many as possible to come and participate, but want to thank the Gateway Cog for choosing Avalon as its destination. And that's all I've got.
Well, just a little bit, not much. I'm going to probably miss the next council meeting. I am going to be attending my son's wedding anniversary, wedding day up in Kauai next Saturday, so I'll be, I won't be able to the next meeting, but hopefully everything's going to go well, the rain will cease a little bit. They had 27 inches of rain.
Oh, my God.
In 24 hours the other day. But then also, just on a family note, for me, which I feel really good about it, is my daughter's going to graduate from UC Irvine.
Yes.
Yay.
She's on, and she's on the dean's, and she's on the dean's list, so...
Yay, Tessa.
Yeah, so anyway, other than that, everything's going well.
Good.
Thanks.
Proud moment.
Last week, I attended the Leo California Cities Revenue and Taxation Committee meeting and Community Services. I have a couple of handouts that I'm going to distribute amongst you guys to look at. There's some scary stuff coming in the ballot for cities, really scary stuff. And also, I'm unfortunately going to miss the first meeting to make, because we're going to be on vacation for a couple of weeks, so have fun without us.
Okay, there'll be only three. Okay, all right.
Girl's Day.
I want to thank Catalina Cross Classic Cruises for inviting my husband, and then me, to attend the Conservancy Ball, so I'll still declare it, but he got the invitation, not his wife. And it was a lovely event, so I enjoyed that a lot. And that's all I have for now. Okay, so, presentations.
I don't think we have any.
Okay. Or all communications, this is an opportunity for members of the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken.
Judy Greer, 355 Disconsol Avenue, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Friends of the Library this time, the new librarian in the future, now that we have hired an associate to work. The new librarian, Morgan Pershing, will be here and tell you what's going on with the library. First of all, they are going to renovate the library, and she's involved in some of those meetings. It won't close for a long time, so please don't worry about that. When it does close, they will have another place for the library to meet until the reconstruction is done. It will take a while. The other thing I want to do is thank the people that came out to our book sale on Saturday. Want to thank the Island Company for providing the bags, and we let people put as many books as they want to into a bag, and it was a very successful sale. We had a really good time. The other thing I want to remind people is that we, during the summer on Wednesdays, have activities that we pay for that are usually geared to children, about these go throughout the whole summer. So Wednesday afternoons, especially in the summer, the first one's going to start actually now, is Natalia's Bilingual Family Concert, so all the family can join. This will be out in the front of the library at 3:30 to 4:30 tomorrow, so bring everybody by. The other thing is to remind you of the book club, and again, the book, this time, is The Best That We Can Do by a Pulitzer Prize-winning writer, and the books are given to us free because of something that Morgan set up with the Beach Cities Libraries, and so there are books in the library, there's about five of them, they are free, and it's a graphic novel, so you can read it in 12 minutes. Yeah, well, okay, it might take you an hour, but it's called The Best We Can Do, and we are going to meet on Tuesday, April 24th at 7:00. So try to get there, I think you'll enjoy it, I think it'll be something that you'll be interested in, and just for your own knowledge, there are four or five of these books, and they are free, and they're through this program that Morgan has established.
Thank you.
Hi, Allison Osinski, 356 Sumner. Couple things, just wondering the status of providing dock carts for boaters. It's almost summer again, still no dock carts for hauling gear and provisioning. What's going on with the fuel dock? It's coming up on, you know, another season, and your boats just get beat to death trying to get fueled the way we're doing now. It's like being in Ensenada and handing up your carts and buckets. This is getting ridiculous, so just wonder what the status is. Also, the status of the alley resurfacing project that seems to have gone away, and also the plans to beautify the city by burying the electrical lines and telephone poles. Also, what the status is of the city Wi-Fi project. And here we are, another summer without a swimming pool, so just my request again about what's anybody doing about it. The Pool Committee has called Supervisor Han's office and asked to have a meeting to discuss the county becoming involved, since we seem to be getting nothing done with the city and the Island Company. But we're, of course, encouraging you to continue to work on this, to again, look at, you know, buying land, taking land, doing whatever is necessary to find someplace where we can put this. We encourage you, since the Island Company has kind of made noises about not being interested in running the golf course anymore, the city taking over the golf course would be a great idea. We could take hole number one, put the pool and the rec center there, and relocate hole number one of the golf course. So it's another piece of land we've got our eyes on, and we'd encourage you to continue to talk to them about it and see if we can do something about this already. We're going on year number 42 about building that pool. Thank you.
I don't know if there's any of these things that we want to address, or just maybe Denise, we can talk about them. The Wi-Fi happens to be with Catalina Broadband, correct?
Yes.
And I know that you did, they just met with you recently.
Yes, and Jim's is in the audience, and he could speak on that if he'd like, as well as the dock carts. I just want to say that Allison is the only person that has ever requested those carts, and at this point, I don't think that we have felt as, that it's needed. If only one person from the harbor has requested them from the harbor. JJ could probably come forward and say when he is estimating that the fuel float will be placed.
I mean, and as much as I would love to see underground wiring, underground as well, and I don't know how we would even ask the community, but with so many absentee landlords, they really don't care about that $10,000 to $15,000. They don't want to pay that, they don't want that on their tax bill, because I have asked to put it underground. I mean, I would like to see it, but we can't go like this, you know, it has to be...
It's all or nothing.
It's all or nothing. So I know, you don't have an alley, do you?
Yes.
Oh, you do as well? So, I mean, you, go up and down your street, start with that, go up and down your street and ask all those people if they're willing to pay for it, because I just don't think people want that.
It's not something that Edison is going to pay for.
They have the money.
Or AT&amp;T.
And ultimately, if Edison were to expend that, then that would come back, and all of us would be paying for it, and that's, I mean, it's just not something that I think everybody is willing to put up the money for.
You could, I just mentioned something, that we do pay a fee every month on our telephone bills for doing that. We've been paying it for about 20 years, but I'm going to look at the math, where it's down.
I'm sorry, but you're talking about on our telephone bills, correct? Or on our, that would be something that we could definitely ask AT&amp;T, yes.
They suck that money on East Whitley.
Oh, we sucked it out?
They went the whole.
What was happening on East Whitley?
When they undergrounded East Whitley a bunch of years ago, they used all the underground money that Edison had in fact, also all had, the cable company had, and they haven't replenished the funds in three weeks.
Oh, okay.
Can you understand?
The last big project that was done was East Whitley, and that used all of Edison's and the telephone company's underground money at that time. In fact, it went over, so it used a little bit of future money, and I understand they have not replenished the funds yet to undertake any large projects.
Okay, but we could get an update, that would be easy enough. And I know we're really not supposed to discuss this, but I hate for somebody to come up, talk about a bunch of things, and then we look like a bunch of dummies because we don't say anything. So where we can answer, I'd like us to just take a second or two to just kind of clarify things, if we do have an answer. And the pool, you know, you know what that is? We're going to be moving forward with the Island Company on a lot of different things, and hopefully in the near future, so it's not off the list. With regards to the golf course, the city did have a number of meetings with them about taking over the golf course, because they approached us first. We cannot, it was kind of decided that we could not afford to take that on because of our wages, number one. We pay, our wages and benefits are so much more, we even looked at how we could contract them and whatever, but I know that they are, I believe Island Company is looking at an outside source to take over the golf course at this time, so I can answer to those. Okay, Jim?
Good evening. Regarding the public Wi-Fi system, we have on our agenda at our meeting for this coming Thursday at 1:00 PM, a presentation scheduled from Catalina Broadband for what they are proposing to put into the community as far as enhancements to the public Wi-Fi. It's my understanding that they will be asking for financial support toward that in the neighborhood of $40,000. I don't have the benefit of the proposal yet, that will be on Thursday, but there are hopes, and since we've been an agency making a lot of noise about this, I'm sure is to come back to us looking for help in that funding, so...
Okay, and did a lot of people get, I got a letter that's saying on June 4th, on certain streets, the power was going to be, is that because of the Wi-Fi that...
I believe it's related, but not specific to a future enhancement. It's, they're replacing nodes, is the term of art for it, and there are a few key nodes in the city that we tend to overload routinely. We all experience that, that's technically what's happening, is when a node is overloaded, so they're splitting them and adding additional nodes, and they have to shut down intermittently to do that.
Okay, so maybe then, instead of putting you on the spot, Jim, and you did a great job, but maybe we could ask them to come to one of the meetings and give a, just give a five-minute update to the community.
And Allison, if you're free, you're welcome to attend that meeting in here for yourself.
Okay, great, thank you. Harbor Master?
Hi.
Hi.
How we doing? I didn't quite hear everything, but the carts was one of them I did hear, so I'll address the cart issue. We don't plan on putting carts on the pier. There's several reasons why, one, congestion problems, two, the carts never get put back when they're, where they're done using, they end up all over town, I'm sure we all been through the vaunt still. So there's nothing at this time that we're looking at to put carts onto the pier. Catalina Diver Supply has aluminum carts, and if, I'm sure if the people wanted to rent those, or I'm not speaking for them, they have made them available to people. The problem is, they just don't get put back. They, they go down and they leave them, so as far as we're concerned right now, as we speak, we have no plans of putting dock boxes, or dock rowons or whatever, on the pier. What was the second question?
About the, the...
Oh, the fuel dock. The fuel dock is, it kind of went to the back burner right now because of, we're getting ready for summer with the inflow, and that had quite a bit of damage on it over the years due to lack of maintenance, and so our focus is the inflow, and then our focus is going to be on the dinghy dock between the clubs. We got to get that painted up and get that fixed, get ready for Memorial Day. So realistically, I'm really, I'm really hoping for July 4th on that fuel dock, but there's, that I think is a, you know, that's going to be tough to do. I mean, we have it built, it's just a matter of getting the equipment and the time to work on it, and it's just, we prioritize it, and for right now, we're just using the pier and the float, and it, as bad as that people might think that is, it's still better than nothing, you know? So we still, we're still working on it, it hasn't been, you know, off the list, and again, it's just, we got a lot of stuff and not a whole lot of hands doing it.
And I'm just going to state an opinion, because, I mean, we have a lot of boaters from Memorial Day on, correct?
We have a lot of what?
A lot of boaters that come from Memorial Day on, and I'm wondering, is that the best priority? Because it's also kind of a safety issue, I would think, with not being able to fuel as comfortably as they would if that was there, or is that just little teeny boats that come there?
No.
I mean, I don't know, is that small, mainly because it's just small boats that go on?
Right, well, I mean, small boats, you know, again, it depends on tide and everything else, but however, it, you know, they're able to get fuel, that's, I don't foresee that as a safety problem, and we've been doing it that way for years. It just, there's a lull between Memorial Day and July 1st because of graduation and everything, and it gives us the opportunity to try to get, finish up our projects and get them in for summertime. Again, it's just, that inflow, we need that inflow, we need to get that in the water, we need to get the swim lines up, you know, and swim floats in for the kids, and Dan's parade of stuff that he puts out there, so...
Okay, okay.
But, no, is it a safety habit? Absolutely not. Is it, is it inconvenience on a low tide? Maybe so, but it's, you know, we're not dealing with any, you know, any major issues where the, you know, the boats can't fuel up, that we have a hose that's long enough to go over, so...
Okay, thank you.
It's just one of those things.
Yeah, thank you for explaining that.
Okay.
Yes?
Yes. Hello, John Council with the Avalon Diving History Exhibit. I'd like to make quick, two announcements for us. On the 26th of this month, we'll have about 120 visitors from UCSB, an annual diving trip, which will include, the First Lady of Scuba, Zayal Perry, will be here, so it's a great exposure for the island to have all these people come here to dive. And then I have confirmation, as of yesterday, that we will have NASA representatives coming on May 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th, to come here to look and explore the island, to see if this can possibly be a place to train astronauts in 2019.
Wow.
So it's quite, quite a big deal. And so we will be touring the executives around the island to show them some of the places on the island, potential places that they can run some of the equipment that they want to get in the water and train the astronauts with, so it's going to be a cool project.
So it's going to be a cool project.
I thought astronauts went up into space.
They trained in the water.
They trained in the water.
Oh, okay.
It's a whole waitlist.
I think everybody knew that but me.
Yeah, it's a whole waitlist thing. So anyway, they'll be here in May, and then we'll be setting up, hopefully, working out arrangements to have a program set up for 2019 in summer to do training here, and I think it would be an absolute windfall for publicity for Avalon.
That's great. John, thanks for all you do in that area.
Okay, all right.
It does benefit the community, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any others? Okay, consent calendar.
We have seven items on the consent calendar this evening. We have actions from the April 3rd City Council meeting. We have warrants with a total expenditure amount of $2,219,269.3. We had the adoption of a resolution reciting the facts of the general municipal election held on Tuesday, April 10th, 2018. And I just wanted to mark that Annie Marshall had 517 votes, Cindy Cassidy had 487, and Pam Albers was 407. We did not get the final notification from the county until this morning, and so we were able to open up the remaining vote-by-mail and provisionals. It was a very frustrating process for all of us trying to get everybody the information. We apologize, but our hands were tied, we couldn't get this information any quicker.
Well, we appreciate what all you all did amongst all the other jobs and all the other things going on in the city, and all the staff, and from the people that worked the poles to you heading up, the city clerk. And Glenn, thank you very much.
And the measure treaty did fail with 497 votes. We have posted the official results that you guys will certify tonight by resolution on the website already, and I mailed it to quite a few people today. Number four is to approve the not-to-exceed-it cost for $50,000 for the consulting services of Charles Abbott Associates for the administration of fats, oils, and grease program. Number five is to approve a contract with Ola Unu for a not-to-exceed amount of $61,000 to assist the City of Avalon with compliance with year five of the requirements for the small municipal separate stormwater system, which you guys always hear, we refer to that as the MS4 permit. Number six is adopting the resolution approving the receipt of grant funding provided by Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority Call for Projects. Number seven is to authorize an expenditure for the repair to the Pebble Beach Lift Station Electrical Control Panel to be funded by Sewer Fund 108256552 in a not-to-exceed amount of $112,000. If you have any questions, we have department heads here to answer them.
Okay, are there any questions, Mike Council? Any questions of the audience? Okay.
Staff, I want to seven.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, no further comments, call for the vote.
All ayes.
Thank you. And general business.
Well, I guess number eight, we will be missing this evening, yes. That was to present, we did have a nice proclamation for Joe Sampson, so I will give him a call and have him come in to us.
Could we still, could we still read it for him?
Absolutely. Want to read it, Annie?
I'd be happy to read it. I'd be happy to read it.
I could ask him to come to the next meeting, too.
You're listening? What's that?
I could ask him to come to the next meeting, too.
Okay. This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Avalon honoring Joseph A. Sampson for his years of service as council member of the City of Avalon. Whereas Joe has served the City of Avalon and our community for many years in numerous capacities, including four years as a member of the City Council, and whereas Joe has served as a strong advocate for the public, has great passion for the City of Avalon, and served our community with distinction. And whereas the City of Avalon has benefited greatly because of Joe's particular interest and work in the areas of water sustainability. And whereas Joe's persistence regarding the issue of fresh water maintenance has assisted in the future exploration of new fresh water resources. And whereas Joe's passion led to policy development and review of city initiatives, including skate park renovations and countless other items. And whereas this governing body by this recognition wishes to express its appreciation to Joe for meritorious service and dedication to the City of Avalon. Now therefore, the City of Avalon, the City Council and the citizens of Avalon offer their deep gratitude to Joe for his dedication and service to improve the City of Avalon for all residents and visitors dated the 17th, day of April 2018.
The next few items on general business is we will be seating of the newly elected officer, which would be Pam Albers as a City Council member, and Annie, and then to Cindy, you will be administered through the oath again. And then amongst you, you will determine who you would like to be as the mayor pro tem. Then you will assign or have volunteers for the two persons that sit on the audit committee. And the last thing is just because you are appointed as the hospital board of trustees, and to appoint a chairman for that board. Those are the remaining items.
Great, okay.
So normally, I start with the mayor because of your position.
Okay.
One second.
Go for it, Annie.
Aye. Mary Marshall.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
Support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
Constitution of United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of State California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely.
And that I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
For purpose of evasion.
And I do faithfully discharge.
And I do faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Welcome back.
Okay, Pamela.
Okay.
You're raging, you know, you're...
I've never done it. It's been a long time ago.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye, Pamela Albers.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
[applause]
Thank you, JJ.
Want to do it again, Annie?
We've never done that with my people.
I know.
Cindy, since you're... The next one.
So I?
Aye. Cindy McGuggan-Cassidy.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely.
And that I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
For purpose of evasion.
For purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
[applause]
Thank you, Pamela.
Thank you.
I, Pamela Albers.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely.
And that I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
For purpose of evasion.
For purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Welcome back.
[applause]
Okay, Pamela.
Okay.
You're raging, you know, you're...
I've never done it.
It's been a long time ago.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye, Pamela Albers.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely.
And that I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
For purpose of evasion.
For purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
[applause]
Thank you, Pamela.
Thank you.
I, Pamela Albers.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely.
And that I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
For purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
[applause]
Turn you and your chair.
All right, thank you, Ollie.
Pam, welcome to the team.
Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, Mayor, Council, you are to appoint a mayor pro tem.
Okay.
You can call for nominations, or somebody to volunteer, or however you'd like to do it, it's been done always.
Okay, well, we can call for nominations for Mayor Pro Tem?
I'll nominate Cindy.
I'll second that. Discussion? Are there any more nominations? Be none? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Wow, that's a, that's a really great honor. Thank you.
[applause]
Now, does the mayor pro tem have to sit by me? Or do they sit wherever they want?
You want to keep us separate? No, I'm just kidding.
It seems like they're always sitting to the right of the mayor, but however, you guys can sit how you'd like up there.
Okay. We'll decide the next time we return, how's that?
Okay.
All righty. The audit committee. Currently, it's...
It's Richard and Cindy on the audit committee.
Yes.
Oh, my God.